First thing is the approval of electronic participation by school board member. Is there a motion to approve? We have two school board members, Ms. Lowry and Mr. Andrews will be joining us remote.
I move.
I say.
And I think we need to specify that these are both for personal reasons.
These are for health reasons, and they have justified that they follow the policy for electronic participation. Ms. Do you think we had a motion? A second by Mr. Trost. Madam Clerk, could you call for the vote, please?
Mr. Gilio.
Yes.
Mr. Trost.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
If we're doing both, Ms. Lowry.
No, not yet.
She shouldn't vote until she's actually approved.
Approved to be participating.
Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you. Now you're officially in, Ms. Lowry and Mr. Andrews, you're both as part of this meeting. Dr. Day, pledge of allegiance, please.
Can you hear?
Yes.
Yes.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Lowry.
Approval of agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Ms. Preston. Mr. Trost, any discussions on agenda? Mr. DePaul.
The two things we mentioned in the last meeting are going to be brought up in the finance.
Yeah, I'll bring those up when we do the financial.
Both of them, okay, super, yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gilio.
Yes.
Mr. Trost.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry.
Yes.
And Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Next one is E1, public comments, Dr. Day.
Okay. So I'm going to read the statement here about the procedure here, and then we'll have our public comment. Persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures, and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures, make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to their official duties, engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others, or address the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and/or responsibilities of the school board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit their comments to five minutes. The representatives shall identify the group at the beginning of their presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. The total allotted time for public comments at school board meetings is 30 minutes. Public comments are reserved for the public to provide input. The board does not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise engage in discussion at this time. And we have just one individual asking to address the board, Erin Colemanaki, if I've pronounced it correctly. So, please.
Hello.
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 And I apologize, I am kind of reading this, it's been a hectic week, so it is internalized, but I'm going to refer to the paper as well. So, good evening, public school board and everyone present today. I am Erin Colemanaki, and it's my pleasure and privilege to come back a year later to extend another heartfelt invitation for you for an extraordinary event here at LCS. On August 3rd, and I'm sorry for the short notice, our team will host the fifth edition of Tech Stravaganza that will be held at Heritage High School. So mark the date, for those of you who have attended in the past, you know that it's more than just an event, it's a celebration of educational technology and professional learning, and this year is unique in that it might just be our grand finale for the style of event. So Tech Stravaganza has blossomed into one of Virginia's largest free ed tech conferences, and collaboratively hosted by the former ITRTs in conjunction with Lynchburg City Schools IT Department, and supported by Dawnwise this year and the LCS Ed Foundation, it's going to be our best yet. So why should you attend? This conference is not just for teachers within our division. The invitation is extended beyond just LCS to educators, coaches, supervisors, and administrators who wish to engage in a plethora of learning opportunities as it involves education. So we have over 70 presentations tailored to various roles in education, so we can assure that the day is filled with inspiration and innovation. We're thrilled to host over 400 attendees last year, and we anticipate the same or larger this year. Our diligent little team of 12 has secured over $9,000 in sponsorships thanks to our commitment by the city to support this event. So we get to treat our guests with lots of perks, we'll have golf cart coffee and laundry donut, we'll have Purple Door catering, providing free lunch to any attendee that's there and registered, and Kona Ice is showing up for that for free, and we have giveaways at the end of the day that total more than $1,500 for educators. Anything from box seats at the Hillcats game, and then sleeping over overnight at the stadium, to golf lessons, so really anything or resources for the classroom. But it's just more than food and prizes. Tech Stravaganza is about enriching our educational community. We have a kids camp for children in grades first through six filled with computer science and technology infused activities. Companies like iXL, Adventum, Seesaw, New Line Interactive, which are integral to the LCS teacher's success, will also be presenting. So in conclusion, I warmly invite you to Tech Stravaganza on August 3rd. Come witness and participate in the synergies created by LCS teachers as they collaborate, innovate, and prepare to kick off another successful school year. Your presence will be a testament to our shared commitment to education and an endorsement of the incredible work that our educators contribute to our students. And thank you, because I know some of you have already registered to attend this event. Even if you can only come for an hour, it would be great to see you all there, and teachers would appreciate it. So let's celebrate learning, let's celebrate technology, and let's celebrate the teachers at LCS. And I have just a postcard in case you would like to see our website that gives you more information.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to break the protocol, Dr. Edwards, you want to? This brings our parents to need to know we are technologically way ahead of them.
Oh goodness, yes, yes. So I learned a lot at the last couple of Tech Stravaganzas. Actually, Board, if you remember, the book study that you did last year was based on the guest speaker from the last Tech Stravaganza. So thank you, Ms. Colemanaki, for coming and offering the invitation to school board members and those in the listening public who also want to attend this wonderful event. And the fact that you said it was the largest free speaks to the dedication of the LCS staff in putting together some wonderful workshops and resources that people around the state want to come and spend learning time with us. And it's just fun, too, so thank you so much.
Free lunch makes me to sign up, I was going to show up. What is the absolute deadline to sign up?
Yeah, so, sign up.
You can still sign up.
I'll still sign up, okay, thank you. Thank you. F1 is student reps are on summer vacation, so we don't have it, we miss them, we hope by next meeting they'll be here.
Did we send to them those questionnaires that we approved last?
Yes, we sent it to both last year's and the year before, we are hoping to get them back.
Thank you. G1 is financial training, Dr. Edwards.
Yes, and this is a financial training on reading the board reports and information that you are going to receive as number two. And this will be the best 14-minute and 59-second training ever done by Ms. Barbara Reifkama, who is the Assistant Director, Finance Director, and Ms. Karen Kapazi, who is CFO, so thank you.
No pressure at all here. So, the finance training is just going to go real quick over the what and why of school finance. I will say normally I do this for staff, and it's normally a two-hour training, so if I get this in 14 minutes, don't you dare tell them. So primarily, we have funding sources, we've got three primary types of funding sources, operating, and that's the one that we report to the school board. Grants, which is what is reported to the school board quarterly or when requested, and then student activities. Those funds really aren't reported to the school board because they are controlled by the principals, and they are basically created by the students. So policies and procedures. All the policies are established by the governing board, and all of the procedures are the process by which those policies are met. That's something I've been quizzing people on during my trainings, because I want them to understand that big difference. Either way, all policies and procedures apply to all funding sources, all payment types, all departments, and all schools. I tell people that if it runs through an LCS account and has an LCS tax ID number, these policies and procedures have to be followed. So, the annual budget. Virginia Code is what basically dictates our annual budget, 22.1-92. The big takeaway here is that the amount of money deemed to be needed during the next fiscal year for the support of the public schools is classified into major funding sections. And so that loops into our school board policy, which is School Board Policy DB, which basically outlines the education plan and presents the proposed plan of expenditures and the expected means of financing those expenditures after adoption. The superintendent and board have designed this policy calendar, which is School Board Policy DBE. You can see that admin, principals, directors are all the top pieces, and then school board are all the bottom pieces, so you, so we get February and June off, you guys get September, October, and December off. Otherwise, we're all really busy with budget throughout the year. Okay, the management of school funds, this is one of my favorite areas. The management of school funds falls under Virginia Code 22.1-115. The board should prescribe the following major classifications for expenditures of school funds. This part I point out to people is very important. We have a very long account code that's like hundreds of digits, it seems. Not quite that bad, it's actually 18, but it seems like hundreds. But our account codes line up with the bottom section under instruction, administration of attendance and health, pupil transportation, operation and maintenance, food service, facilities, debt and fund transfers, technology, and contingency reserves. This is how you guys give the budget to us, and this is how city council approved this year budget. So that falls in with the management of funds. Basically, the superintendent or their designated responsible for administering the division's budget in accordance with the board policies and applicable state and federal regulations and laws. And so this is the circle of how it works. The Virginia Code says that the required financial information reported to the school board, the board policy appoints the superintendent or their designated, superintendent appoints the finance department. We then provide the financial reports monthly back to the board for our operating funds. So the fiscal accounting and reporting process of this, again, this falls into that same Virginia Code of 22.1-115, shall, sorry. I walk when I talk, I'm sorry. If you cut off my hands or stop me from moving, I'm speechless. So anyhow, that shall establish and require of each school board division a modern system of accounting for all school funds, state and local, and we shall render those reports to you monthly. So the system that, the school board policy of that also basically says the same thing, that you will receive a monthly operating statement of the funds available for school purposes. The system of accounting that we use for LCS is, next slide, the ALIO accounting system. It tracks both our operating and our grant funds. All of the funding for the school, for the student activity funds, is tracked locally at each school. So, the positives of the ALIO system, the longevity in the system, we've been there for about four years. Most of us know the system or know the basics of the system. We have control access through multiple options, manages our multiple payroll requirements, reporting of a PDF format is fairly simple, and manages P-cards position controls, and we're looking at the grant project option of it. Grant projects would help us tremendously because it means that budgets would roll from year to year with funds that are extended. Right now, every year, we have to put those budgets back in new. The negatives, it's not really user-friendly. It's a little better than the old-timey where you type in the code to make it function, but it's not very far beyond that. Support services can be slow, and they can be costly. It can take up to a week to get a problem resolved, and if we have a major budget issue waiting that week, it can be a little bit of a challenge. Budgeting is difficult just because of the fact that you can't do it in the primary database. You have to start in the demo, and then you have to manually put it into the primary, a little backwards. And reporting options are limited. PDF is great, anything downloaded into Excel becomes gobbledygook, and the system glitches. They seem to occur at random, one day it works great, and the next day you're going, where did that figure come from? So, this is just an example of how we create the reports. This is the PDF, you guys have seen some of these PDFs before. This is what it gives us in Excel. And for finance people, that type of Excel, and that's actually just one small screenshot. It was actually like, I don't know, it went over to like ZYT, and it went down to like 800, and it makes it very complicated. So, that was under 15 minutes. Too much pressure, cut it real short, but what questions do you have for me?
Well done. Question is, why are you still using the system?
We were looking at changing systems, and what we discovered was when we went to change systems that for every plus, there's a minus, and the system we were looking at did not have the payroll capabilities we needed. And so we would rather have to manually create reports or take a PDF and create it into an Excel than to have to manually do state tax reports. So, it's a plus-minus situation.
If you were to find a system that would replace it, you're willing to or able to?
Yes. I mean, we have not, I may be speaking wrong for Ms. Kapazi and I, but we have not ruled out a system. But at this point, everything, all the other school districts we've talked to, they all experienced their own set of problems. So we have not found a system that works, if that makes any sense, across the board. Every one of them either has a reporting issue, or they don't match up with the way our account strings, general ledger account strings have to work, or they don't do the taxes the way we need. It's like every little system has a glitch. So at least we know these glitches.
That's good. My question would be, how many grant writers do we have, and how many grant applications are submitted per year?
I can answer that, but trying to narrow that down here. At this point, how many grants do we have, Karen, what'd you tell me, 30?
32.
32 grants that are currently open, that also includes all of our title grants. We have one person in charge of grants, she does the writing for the title grants. She does have one assistant that helps manage the private school aspect of that and the other aspects of that. Right now, we've got three grant applications outstanding that we're waiting to hear on, and I'm sorry, I forgot the second part of your question.
How many per year do you tend to submit?
It varies per year, but we at least submit all of the titles, which are, what, four? Four title grants, plus we've got a couple of special education grants, which adds another three in there, and then we have the other grants as they come up and are found that are submitted.
Would you say you'd have an 80% success rate, 50, 90, 100 for every grant?
We actually have a really high success rate for most of our grants. Most of our title grants are guaranteed monies, we just have to give them the proof that we are growing in some fashion, so that makes it nice, but we do have a very high success rate. Even with the grants that we've gone out and gotten recently, we've had almost 100% success rate. The three grants that are outstanding, we are anticipating getting, we don't know why we wouldn't. So, there are, there is a lot of ability out there, it's just finding the staff to do it, because our grant writer also manages our grants, which means that not only does she write them, but she also stays on top of the department heads and the schools to make sure the money is spent in a timely fashion, and so that's a lot on one person. Even with an assistant, that's a lot on one person.
Why don't you go for a grant for an additional assistant?
Because those types are hard to find unless we can directly impact students. We really like to impact students and not necessarily support the process.
But, Mr. Gilio, also, like, Dr. Wodka has written two grants himself here within the past year. Dr. Brown, you know, has written the SBMH grant. Now, John Collins, our IT director, did ask for a little bit of support from Dr. Wodka and a grant writer. That was more a time issue. So there are on occasions where we will subcontract that workout if we can't get to it.
But the beauty of the subcontract that we use was, if we don't get the grant this year with this gentleman's services, he will provide them next year for free.
Tremendous.
So, we paid him one set fee, we get at least one year of approval, and if not, he'll get the feedback, and then he'll submit it again next year with the corrections that now he understands where the grant failed, if we don't get it, but we anticipate getting it at this point.
So this is a subcontract?
Yes, with the grant writer, with this one specific grant writer it is.
So with one extra person's help, do you think you can get to 40, 45 grants next year?
I think it would be the management of the grants on the backside, because like, for instance, with cares where it just keeps carrying over year after year, the title grants do that also. So it's a matter of cleaning up the carryover before we can get to the point where we can manage the day-to-day management of those grants.
Right, because, for example, the title grants, you can have up to three years open. And then because of COVID, we actually had a fourth year open. So when you're looking at five grants, but you've got four years, that's 20 pools of money that we have to manage individually. And so it makes it hard to keep track of which individual pool you're coming from at what time.
Let me give Ms. Lowry and Mr. Andrews, if you have any questions. Ms. Lowry?
No, first question I was asked was, was there's a better system that they had?
She's saying if you have a better system, we should?
Well, and we are looking at that, we're also looking at just perhaps upgrading the current system we have to maybe help resolve some of the issues, because they have been bought out with a new company, so we're hoping the new company will add some of the pieces that are missing.
Mr. Andrews?
He says no.
No, okay.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Just with regards to the program, have you checked other school districts?
Yes.
Okay. I'm assuming that not everyone's on that same system.
No, there's, what, six systems being used throughout the state of Virginia? Six that we're aware of. But, I mean, every time we reach out to somebody, they go, don't use this system, it does this, and we're like, okay.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned glitches, are they affecting your work performance or ability to do your regular job? One of the pros and cons you had was glitches, glitches could be systemed down for a while.
The glitches don't impact it as much as the delay in help service does. I mean, we had a situation, we had a situation recently with our P-cards that it took me five days to get resolved. I could tell them what the problem was, but by the time, they're short staff, so by the time their staff was finally able to get in and assist us, it was five days that we waited. And, I mean, we're in our audit season, budget prep, all of that, I really don't have five extra days to sit here and wait. So, anyhow, they're assuring me it's going to get better. At this point, I have to take their word for it, but I do have a supervisor's phone number now that I can call when I need to.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Thank you.
Now, next one, F G2 is June 2023, revenues, expenditure, health insurance, Dr. Edwards?
Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kapazi for this.
I feel like we just looked at these. So we just went over these with the finance committee. If anyone has any changes that they would like to make, please give those to Dr. Day, who will communicate with Dr. Edwards. The first one is our standard monthly board report that does show, again, this is for June 30. This is not the final, the final will come after our audit is complete. But our adopted budget being at $106 million, the prior year encumbrance that rolls over for services from the '22 to the '23 budget was $654,000, $351,000 was deferred revenue, $365,000 was a book donation. So our adjusted budget for the year was $107,683,381.75. So the revenue expenditure summary there in the white boxes below show June 23 in comparison to June of '22, so the revenue received to date is actual revenue received as of June 30. The expenditures to date are the actual amounts that have been expended, those bills have been paid. The expenditures, including the encumbrances below, has the money that has been encumbered, that we do still have some of those that were being paid, that, like I said, that finalized report as far as that June 30 date will come after the audit. But the remainder of that will end up being that reserve for encumbrance rolling into the fiscal year '24. So as soon as the audit is complete, you will see that on the above portion relative to fiscal year '24. The health insurance reserve below that, we will be, as long as the audit committee is okay with it, we're going to include all of the reserves that are held over the city to include a $25,000 reserve for weather that is here. There's a special education reserve, the health insurance reserve, and a textbooks reserve over at the city. So I think just for informational purposes, so that everyone knows what those dollar amounts are, just as this sits there and you just see it every month, unless we tap into it, it'll just be that same number month over month. The health insurance summary portion in the The health insurance summary portion in the white boxes is the current from May twenty twenty-three to June of twenty twenty-three. Um, you can see that we did, uh, excuse me, end up in a, uh, with a deficit value. Um, below that, you see the health insurance summary for again, May, but of twenty twenty-two to June of twenty twenty-two. And then in the green boxes is the side-by-side year, year-over-year comparison from the twenty-one, twenty-two school year to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So this format will continue forward unless there's any requested changes. As of right now, the finance committee did not present any requested changes. The revenue report is a side-by-side of the current year, twenty-two, twenty-three on your left. Um, the twenty-one, twenty-two on your right. So going forward, unless there's any requested changes, we will keep this format the same. However, twenty-two, twenty-three will be on your right and twenty-three, twenty-four will be on your left. All of the revenues that are budgeted and then how they're received is on your left so that you know exactly where it came from and then how it was allocated once the EDI was, the EDI deposit was received. The expenditure report is not a year-over-year. That is a separation of personnel versus non-personnel expenses for the current year. Um, the budgeted numbers, what was budgeted, the transactions are exactly what has been paid. The percent of the budget used is only that percent of what has been paid of the total budget in that. The encumbrance is what's still remaining to be paid. The budget available is less what has been paid and the encumbrances. So the final budget used percentage is the total of the amount paid and the encumbrances against the total amount budgeted. So this also, there's been no requested changes to it as of now, so this will continue in this format also. That's all I have.
Question for you. When I was looking at this, I was looking, just about every single one of the lines changed from last year to this year. When I looked at the, um, lottery, it went from like one, two.
Oh, you're looking at revenues, okay.
Yeah, lottery, what's, as an example. And when I scroll down and I look at, um, rents.
Yes.
They're static. How long have they been static?
So that is Laurel and CVGS. And Laurel has been, uh, I, I don't know how long it's been static, but I will say that as part of that health insurance summary discussion, that is something that we're looking at now. We warned them last year. So we're looking at that now to see what the actual expense is as far as what the rent should be. The CVGS is a thirty-year, uh, contract, so that's not changing in, for a very long time.
Thirty-year contract?
Yes.
Who, who did that?
That predates me. I believe it predates Dr. Edwards.
Predates all of us.
Let's make a pivot. Look it up.
We will give the contract. Mr. Trosen, you can tell us.
That's for the building? I'm assuming it's for the building.
Yes, so, and, and all the services such as Laurel being a separate entity. Um, uh, we do their yard, their grounds, buildings and grounds, keep up, um, pay the bills over there. So that's all part of that lease. So that will be changing. That's the bigger portion of that. That's a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. The remain is what's the CVGS.
Gotcha. So I was just thinking if their, if Governor School's location was changed, that could change also.
I would assume because it's, you know, like we're doing the buildings and grounds portion of that building, whether they're there or not.
I got you. Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Kapazi? Mr. Tros? Would you, uh, Ms. Kapazi, update the board in terms of additional money?
I'm sorry. Ms. Lowry, go ahead.
And Policy DA says fund by the school board from one major class. And the superintendent or author.
I think she's asking about interline transfers, which is I think a twenty thousand dollar cap on her.
I'm not sure what she's.
Yeah, the audio broke up. The audio broke up, so we did not hear you clearly. You want to try again, asking your question?
Um, Policy DA. Fund says funds.
Can be transferred.
Can be transferred.
By the school board.
To another. So as I was looking at it, the areas that have a s- more, more monies left. Can those be used in areas that when? To balance it all out?
Well, I believe I, I believe I understand what you're asking. Um, that would, so, yes. If you look at last year's, um, school board meeting, there was a request to transfer funds because in between those classifications, the school board has to approve those transfers. So that came through and, and that's exactly what happened. Now, going forward, because city council has approved our budget according to classification, it will require approval by the school board and city council.
That, that approval is only for twenty thousand dollars or above. Like the low thirty twenties to speak, no? Go ahead, Ms. Lowry.
Okay, and there was no, for CTE, there was expenditures, but not budget.
Um, there are some.
Is that based on?
Is it the majority of the CTE in the Perkins?
Yes, and we didn't have a CTE director quite a while. I don't know what the previous, I don't know what the budgeting, um, strategy was in twenty-two, twenty-three because I wasn't here for that budget. So I don't know what the previous person as to why it wasn't in CTE. Um, CTE does have its own program line, but that's exactly why it would have been charged to the correct. But again, I don't, I don't know why exactly it wasn't put there to begin with.
Yeah, and CTE typically tries to expend the Perkins grant first. Um, so they, they will put a bunch of things in the Perkins grant. And just going back to what Mr. Jilil said, Robbie Dooley also writes additional grants. So he's, he's received some money to support CTE as well.
Ms. Lowry, do you have more questions?
That's zero. We've got twelve thousand dollars.
Mr. Andrews?
No questions. Everything seems to be pretty clear to me.
So, Ms. Kapazi, would you please update the board in terms of how much would, did be approved, additional money into the health insurance fund this year, or was it taken out because of budget cuts?
Neither. Um, it was, it remained static because with the changes that we made regarding those percentages to be paid by the employer and the employee, um, we're hoping that that's going to offset and we will remain in the black for the year with where we're currently at.
Would you please update the board? How does our insurance works? It's self-funded, right? What does it mean?
I don't know.
It means whatever we get in premium is available for, uh?
Yes, for the claims.
Spending as benefits.
Right.
So if the benefit claim goes higher than the premiums, then we are in deficit. And that's the reason we are in red most of the months because we're charging a very low premium, whereas the benefit costs have gone up, the cost of healthcare has gone up year after year, month after month.
I did an excellent job of explaining that.
Right, that's good. Is that fair statement?
Yes, absolutely. That's exactly how it works.
Thank you. So we're done with this. Next one is the, um, you got a question, Dr. Day? H. H. Consent agenda. H. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to consent. You move to, uh?
Prove the consent. Mr. Tros, second. Mr. DePaul, any discussion on consent agenda? Any items you want to be pulled out from consent agenda? Hearing that, Ms., Madam Clark, would you class, call the vote please?
Mr. Jilil?
Yes.
Mr. Tros?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
And Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Board member, uh, reports, finance and facilities, Dr. Day?
We have human resources report first.
Human resources was part of the consent agenda.
Oh, it was. Excuse me. My, my mistake. Okay, finance and facilities. It has met twice since our last board meeting. Wants to, uh, elect its chair, um, when they chose me. And then we met earlier this afternoon, three to five. And we talked about several things. We talked about the, um, the agreement, um, for the repairs of the heat system at Dunbar Middle. And, um, let's see, um, I guess this is, we decided this was going to come up again at the work session. So we were, this was just information being shared with us about some of the specifics of this agreement, um, how, uh, cost overruns would be handled and that sort of thing. It's a large document, uh, with lots of information. Is this going to be provided to the rest of the board?
It is already on.
The finance committee.
Okay. Um, then we, uh, were given, um, some cost information associated with the, uh, uh, facilities master plan. Um, and again, I think this is going to be shared with the rest of the board too. This gives various cost estimates, uh, for each of the four scenarios. And within each scenario, there's basically two different estimates. There's sort of an economy version where you kind of do the minimum number of repairs and upgrades. And then there's sort of the, the full version. And there's also here some summary information about, uh, responses to the community surveys, which of the four scenarios people felt most strongly about. Uh, Mr. Wodka went over a lot of the specifics of this with us and how the various numbers were arrived at. In some cases, it's, um, carrying numbers forward from estimates that were made in twenty twenty-two and applying an appreciation rate to try to project them into the future. And so, um, I certainly can't read every line of this to you. It's, but I, the, the finance committee felt also that it needed to digest this information more thoroughly before we had any particular reaction to it. Then, uh, we talked about the format of the monthly finance reports, which we've just been through with Mrs. Kapazi. Uh, we didn't have any particular, uh, changes to recommend. Uh, but, uh, it's possible that we could request that changes to these, this format be made. And if you have any suggestions or requests of that type, you should forward them to me as the chair of the finance committee, and then I will send them onward. Then we had two additional items that we talked about that were not part of the announced budget. Um, one, we talked for a bit about the issue of travel and lodging, uh, funds to support our required professional development activities. Uh, and, um, so as you recall, at, in our budget deliberations at the end of the last fiscal year, one of the things the board elected to do was to remove the funds, uh, that were initially allocated to support, um, overnight travel, um, and lodging for professional development. This is, the amount that was removed was eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars. That's no, money for that is no longer in the budget. So as things stand, for board members to participate in professional development, the registration fees would be covered, but travel and lodging expenses would not. Now, the question that was raised, is there some way to restore that money or somehow cover those expenses for board members? Because we are legally required to participate in professional development activities. Uh, we don't have anything specific to propose. Uh, we, we, we conceivably could ask the superintendent to, uh, raid some other part of the administrative category of, uh, the current budget to come up with about eight thousand dollars. That would be one thing we could pursue if we wanted to do that. But as, as has been pointed out, uh, that would be sort of contravening the decision that last year's board made to take that money out of the budget. Another idea that just I floated brainstorming was, uh, the superintendent explained to us is that later in the fiscal year, there are sometimes, uh, unexpended funds in certain categories that could then be used to cover those, um, travel and lodging costs. But of course, those travel and lodging costs are often mostly occurred, incurred in the fall. So one idea would be to tell board members that if funds were available later in the fiscal year, they could request a late reimbursement for that. I don't know about all the, the legal feasibility of that or the advisability of that. But that was one idea that I offered as a way to address this issue. So we just wanted to bring it to the full board for a little bit of discussion and see how people feel about that. Do you want to ask the, um, superintendent to get out her machete and have at her administrative budget to come up with eight thousand dollars? Or are we willing to bear those costs individually? Or do we want some kind of possible reimbursement plan? I'm just sort of opening the floor for discussion.
Let's do, let's finish the report and then we'll open.
Okay. Then, um, the other thing that we talked about at the end of our, uh, meeting was, um, we, uh, Dr. Gupta and I had talked with, uh, Superintendent Edwards about this. Uh, the idea is to try to limit presentations to the board to fifteen minutes. And we just had an example of that, um, in the interest of keeping those presentations short enough that we can digest them. Uh, where there's more information that could be shared than can be shared in fifteen minutes, the idea would be to ask that that information be provided to us in advance so we could review it, uh, hopefully facilitating a shorter presentation. So we're just kind of, there's no formal policy that we're adopting here. We're just trying to say that's sort of our, going to be our, our request of presenters to try to limit their presentations to fifteen minutes. There, there are probably times that there have to be exceptions to that. And so the one we talked about was, um, at the upcoming joint meeting with city council, MGT will be presenting information from their facility study. And, um, at least I don't think we should try to harness them to fifteen minutes. We're paying them a lot of money to do some work for us and they're entitled to have their time to, to do their job. Uh, but for the most part, we, the idea is that we'd like to limit presentations to the board to fifteen minutes. And that, that was, that's my summary of what we covered at this afternoon's meeting.
Questions for Dr. Day or comments?
Let me just elaborate on that fifteen minute. The purpose is, the information is provided to us before the meeting. So it's more productive presentation just, instead of just going through the litany of slides. And then most of the time is consumed in that and lesser time is left for interaction, the Q and A. So that's the sole purpose. We are not trying to hijack the presentation or reduce the content of it. The assumption is everything is on board docs. Public has the information. Board has the information. And I wanted to add one more thing about the travel. You know, the financial ability or capability of every school board member is different. Some of these meetings are required by the code. So, uh, it's important that, uh, and this is just my personal opinion. We figured out some way to fund. Uh, I have personally not charged except for one school board, one event hotel money with Miss Day booked. But if somebody, uh, would like to have it, then we should have resources to fund, fund that meeting. And, uh, you know, that's, that's my personal stand. And, um, so, thank you, Dr. Day.
Let me just add one thing about the fifteen minute limit. That, um, that does, um, put a little bit more burden of diligence on us as board members to read the documents that are provided to us in advance. And if we have questions, it would benefit to, to communicate them to the presenters so they know in advance what questions we might have and they can, uh, prepare a succinct response to them.
We got to run these meetings more efficiently. And, uh, everybody's time is important, including superintendent and staff. And that's one thing I wanted to say about that budgeting format. Whatever we decide the beginning of the year, we stick to it. We should not change willy-nilly and tell Ms. Kapazi in October, this is the format I like. I like to have. In March, since the spring now, I like to have a different format. Okay, that turns their ship upside down, right? It requires a lot of time and effort to put it. So whatever the Board decides now, we stick it out for the year.
I have a question about that. Does the format that you're using to produce these reports, is that in some way entered into the ALIO system so that it knows you're going to want this format? Or do you have to sort of generate these anew every month?
No, I pull them, the reports from ALIO, such as on the expenditures, the personnel versus non-personnel. There's a personnel report and there's a non-personnel report. And then I just plug those numbers back into that spreadsheet so that it's more readable.
But does ALIO remember the sort of overall format that you want?
Yes.
Okay, okay. That's what I was asking.
Except for when you got glitches in the ALIO, then.
Well, and that's why I plug those into a separate spreadsheet, because to pull a spreadsheet with those two things, it won't work.
Thank you. Other questions for Dr. Day? Gov. School Liaison, Ms. Lowry?
Mrs. Lowry? Gov. School Report?
Oh, yes, I have that. I was out of town, but I talked to everyone before I, the person that emailed me, Kim, before I left, and I had a question and they answered it. So I asked for the minutes, and that's what I was sent. The times and dates and locations for the 23-24 year were reported during this meeting. Typically, the first Wednesday of each month are the meetings at 1:00 P.M. A suggestion by Mr. Smith was to move to quarterly meetings with monthly email updates for non-meeting months. August 2nd, December 6th, March 6th, and May 1st for the 23-24 year would be those dates. If any other meetings are needed due to the unforeseen action items, they will be scheduled during the Wednesday dates of September 6th, October 4th, November 1st, January 3rd, February 7th, or April 10th, with April 3rd being skipped because it would be spring break. And also, the agenda items that were discussed included like review of the monthly financial reports, school audits, findings were made, and all involved are congratulating for doing such a wonderful job. Enrollment update of 149 students for the 23-24 year school year, with 73 new juniors and two new seniors from Amherst, Appomattox, Bedford, Campbell County, and Lynchburg City Schools combined. There were scholarship updates, items of information like your, when school ends or when the last date is, or activities that'll be going on during the school year. And then it concluded with the next meeting being September 6th, and that was set before they adjourned.
Thank you.
And that was the end of the.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lowry. Laurel, I apologize, I forgot to mention in the beginning, Dr. Carter is under the weather, so she couldn't make it. She sends her apologies. But she told me that STEM Academy is, she'll present her report next time, but STEM, they passed their budget and they aligned their admission forms with other places like Gov. School in the system. So those were the two items she wanted me to report, me to report to the Board. So I apologize, Dr. Carter. Your absence today is excused absence. LACR, Ms. Preston, I look more, Mr. Tross, you are the two, you're on Legislative Advocacy meeting.
Yes, yes, no report this time.
No report, thank you. Partners in Education, Mr. DePaul or Mrs. Lowry?
I have no report at this time.
Mrs. Lowry? Hi.
We have not met, so I don't have a report either.
Education Foundation, Mr. Tross or Mr. Jaleen?
No report this time. Working on getting a meeting put together with Dawn Line. I think we've spoken to her recently.
No. Thank you. Beacon of Hope, Mrs. Preston and Mr. Andrews?
I made an attempt to contact Beacon of Hope, and unless Anthony has a report, I don't have one.
Mr. Andrews?
No, I don't have anything else to report.
Thank you. Academic Success Committee, Mrs. Preston or Mr. Jaleen?
No.
No report. Thank you. Ed Hook, Discipline and Policy Review Committee, Dr. Day.
We had a meeting yesterday to, basically the charge to this committee consisted of two parts. The first was to consider how we handle the long-term suspension or expulsion recommendations. What we have been doing this past year and presumably in years preceding is that if a principal makes a recommendation beyond 10 days, it comes to the Board. And so we've had these three-member discipline committees, and the membership rotates through the committee members. And those of you who were on the Board previously know what that's like. We hear the cases one by one. So we are recommending to the Board a different procedure. We, I talked to the Principal, the Superintendent of Verona County Public Schools, who uses a somewhat different approach. And then Dr. Brown and his staff and Dr. Edwards produced a Promethean report of several different options that we might consider. And we talked about those, and we, the Board voted to approve the first of the three options that were on that report. I don't have that report in front of me because I think they're still cleaning up some things about it. But let me try to describe, if I get the details right, the way that the proposed new structure would work. This is what they call a hearing officer approach. So the way this would work is there would be a hearing officer from Mr. or Dr. Brown's staff. It would probably be Amy or Annie Terry, if I have the name right. She would, so once a principal makes a recommendation, it would go to her, and then she would assemble a group of people that would meet with the parent and the student, other school staff, something like what we were doing here with the Discipline Committee hearings, review the details of what happened, let the student explain their side, the principal could explain their side, as well as other Student Services staff who are trained in handling these kinds of things, knowing what resources are available. And then they would make a recommendation to the student and ask the parents, I think, if I get this part right, to sign a letter which, in which they would agree on the facts of the case, what happened. And then that, Ms. Terry would be functioning as a superintendent's designee, which is the language used in the state code. If the student or their family wants to appeal that, they have a legal right to an appeal. The appeal comes to the Board, but it does not mandate a hearing with the student and family again. It would just be a paper dossier comes to the Board. We could look at it, and if there's no new information that we felt justified an additional hearing, we could just say, no, there's no information, new information here. We stand by the decision of the hearing officer, and that would be the end of it. There would be a three, sort of a review board consisting of three members from the school board, but a fixed three members, not rotating, who would, once a month, review the activities of the hearing officer and the cases that they made. You're going to correct me if I say anything wrong, right, Derek? Okay. So that would just, that wouldn't be re-adjudicating individual cases. That would be just reviewing what the action of the hearing officer and her supporters was each month. Just that would be our oversight of the process. If the family or student refused to agree on the facts of the case by not signing the letter, then there, then there would be a hearing of some kind with the right of an appeal to the Board. Does anybody want to chime in and correct anything I've said?
Dr. Brown, would you like to come? The one thing is if the disciplinary committee, school board committee decision is not unanimous, then they can appeal to the whole Board.
Yeah, and that's state law. Yeah.
I think one of the things also, when you said sign a letter, it was the agreement for modification of activity.
Right, things that they were agreeing to do.
Yes.
Dr. Brown?
Yes?
That's correct. So the letter of agreement would be stating that, yes, we agree that we broke the school policy, school rules, and didn't abide by that. And then as a result of that, we are entering into these consequences or this probationary period. And the language in the policy does state that it would be a probationary period, where students are allowed to, it's essentially what you would do during your other Discipline Committee meetings, which all ed placement or returning to the base school under a success contract, making sure they have good behavior grades in attendance. I think the only slight nuance is that the way that the current policy that may be proposed later on tonight is written, if the hearing officer, Ms. Terry makes her decision and the parents would like to appeal, that appeal would first come to that fixed committee of three Board members as a screener. But if they still aren't satisfied with that committee of three, then it would come to the full school board per state code.
So let me add that I think the motivation for this is by having the same people involved all the time. That would help ensure consistency. Some of us on these disciplinary hearings are maybe more soft-hearted and others of us are less so. So this would ensure that it's the same individuals incident after incident so that the rulings would be more uniform. And we would be, these decisions would be being made by people who've had training that we as Board members have not had in handling these kinds of cases.
And many people think, Dr. Brown, you clock out at 4:00 on Friday and don't show up till like 9:00 on Monday. All this work was done over the weekend with you and your staff.
Yes, sir.
Working beyond your clock hours.
That's why I called it.
Not being paid. And you wanted to make sure it happens before the kids come back to school.
That would be ideal. Yes, sir.
So.
We appreciate you doing this. Thank you very much.
So, so if, to move ahead with this requires some adjustments to several of our standing policies. And so that's another part of what Dr. Brown and others did, is to prepare proposed modifications to those policies that I guess we're going to see at the Governance Policy Work Group. Oh, we're going to do it now? Okay.
No, no, they'll be tonight.
Okay, okay, okay. So we're going to come to those policies. And so I guess the approval or disapproval of this proposal will come when we look at those policies.
Offer discussion tonight.
Okay, very good.
Question for Dr. Day?
Well, let me, I've got more to say. Because the second part of our task is to review our discipline policies which address handling of disciplinary issues in the schools as they incur. A disruptive student in the classroom or someone who's not in class when they're supposed to be. And we didn't have time to get very far with that. That's going to be a complicated task. And all I had suggested to the committee was that we need to gather some input about what are the issues that people are concerned about discipline in the schools, then look at the policies that might address that and decide where to go from there. So we did schedule our next meeting, which is August 28th at 3:30, and we will, at that point, try to dig into that second part of our task.
Thank you. Questions for Dr. Day?
The, may I? The, again, the three-person, the permanent school board member panel, we'll call it. They will never have the opportunity to interact and get or solicit new evidence or new information? They're going to be given a report?
I think it would only be if, if there's an appeal that comes to them and they decide that they would like to grant an additional hearing with the student. But they, they're not mandated to do that.
So they do an initial review, and then based upon that initial review, they could request a hearing, much like we do currently, current process. Is that true?
I think if there was an appeal.
If, yeah, of course.
They're going to do a monthly, just kind of overview of what happened, but that's not necessarily, so they could pick those up and say, I want to hear more.
That's not based on appeal.
It would wait for the student or family to make an appeal before.
Goes to that next, next level.
Dr. Brown?
Yep. And then in the policy that's being proposed, the Discipline Committee does have, the three-person Discipline Committee does have the option to bring in families and, under the current structure. It's very similar to how those were, were done. But it's not, according to code, you're not guaranteed a hearing. You're only guaranteed an appeal. So you have that, you have that leniency. You can either read the report and see if there's anything new, or you can bring the parents in.
Okay, now, so it isn't a unilateral decision on the part of the parents. It could be a decision based upon that three-member Board as to whether they want more information. It could be either way. Is that true?
It starts with the parents.
It starts with the parents. Can it ever start with three Board?
Outside of just getting the data on the decisions that were made, which is the purpose of the monthly meeting, you probably won't get into the details of these are the cases. But if a parent or student appealed it, you can say, we'll handle this appeal on the written record, or we'll handle this appeal with an in-person hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Can I, did that answer your question? Because I thought I heard you say something different.
That's what I, well, that's exactly, I heard, you must have picked up the same thing. It almost sounded like the three-panel Board could decide if they want information and go through that to the current level, but I guess that's not the case.
We would have, the three-panel, the three-member Board would never see it unless it was asked for appeal.
And the information part is, if you receive it on the record, you may say, mm, I want to talk to this family, right? And I want to have a hearing with them to see what this, like, they may give you some additional information in writing that doesn't make sense. So you might want to have that hearing and actually talk to the folks. Or you can just rule on the written record.
But again, that's only if there is an appeal.
If there is an appeal, yes.
But there's going to be the process where all of the
Yes.
decisions are going to be reviewed as well by the same panel.
Yeah. So you, so the Board remain, has the oversight of, are we being consistent and looking at it on a month-to-month basis?
Yeah. We just thought that was important to have that oversight, just as a layer of accountability, since we would have one person reviewing all the cases. But Ms. Terry is very knowledgeable and is actually a regional trainer for the model of discipline for Central Virginia. So I've got someone good over top of that.
You think the variations in decision, which has been an issue, will go down?
Do think it would be much more consistent under this model.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
I shall return.
Is there a?
Mr. Jaleen had a question.
Yes. How many appeals can the students have?
Students are, only granted one appeal.
All right.
Once it goes to the full Board.
What is the capability of the Board to reduce or increase the consequences decided?
It is at the discretion of the Board. So they can uphold, alter, or decline the recommendation for the 364-day or expulsion, 365-day suspension.
All right. Ms. Pugh, what are the categories of behaviors that Mr. Day needs to decide?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
He just asked for, he's going to have time for the, decide on the in-school behaviors?
We don't, we haven't got very specific with that. We don't have anything more specific than that statement itself.
Is there a list of repeating, repeated behaviors that you have to deal with every year?
We have that data, yes. I have it in front of me, but that was part of the report that went to the Board, which I think the Dr. Edwards.
Yeah, so in the discipline report that I showed you, and I outlined some of the top.
That was, I think he's not asking specifically about long-term suspensions.
No, he's asking about.
No, but I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is in that same. No, but I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is, in that same report, what you, we have access to our class, like disrespect, and, you know, when you're cursing a teacher out, right? That might not end up at your level, but that might yield a referral that ends up at the classroom, at the building level. So, that information, I think that's what you're asking about. What are those classroom things that end up at the building level? What types of behaviors are we seeing there is in our discipline dashboard as well? That's some of the stuff, data that we're also collecting and looking at.
And during our presentation in June, we reviewed some of the more frequent discipline infractions that we do experience at each level.
And so, so this list will be provided to Dr. Day, so your committee can...
I believe probably part of the process of reviewing the policies and procedure, because I believe that's, that's the main point of that second item, correct, Dr. Day, is to review the policies and procedures that impact the discipline and how we issue consequences and change behavior in the classroom. So, getting feedback from stakeholders was one of the things that we discussed, parents, students, principals, teachers, to see what policies are in place that they feel could be looked at to alter and make things more efficient and effective.
When is, when are those feedbacks coming in?
Well, we haven't gotten that far yet, so...
We don't have a process for that. We just said we want to do that.
Okay, okay. I think one of the most important things that can be done in the beginning of the year is, at the assemblies, to state some very generic but very established policies on behavior in regard to respect of school property, school person, personnel, and peers. If you can do that, if you can have something that doesn't have to have all these details for all line item, you know, this type of this respect or whatnot in the classrooms, if you can have that generally acceptable and announced, we already, we already know this is acceptable to us and it's announced in the beginning of the school year, you, I believe you can, you can provide the ounce of prevention that is worth a pound of cure.
Yes, sir. We agree. And that's a practice that's currently in place on our principals.
Are there three things that you can say to the students coming up this month that falls underneath what I just said?
I think once you, if you have your, and I don't know if you reached out to principals to just talk with them informally, you will learn and you will see in a lot of the buildings, particularly the elementary buildings, that not only are there three things, but children will often repeat what is their school creed about, how I respect myself, how I respect my property, how I care for my neighbor. Like, each school has their own flavor of that. And part of what the building principals do is have the kids recite it, practice it, what does it look like when we're doing it? Look at you, you are respecting your neighbor, you're respecting yourself in a more positive way and positive behavior reinforcement of what they want. And, like I said, each one is different. The Husky Way is different from what the Bulldogs do, and, you know, Bass has been in school. So, and I think those kids are already reciting what their, what their code is, or their pledge, or whatever they define it as, as to how they behave, and what the expectation for self is. And I think that's what you're getting at. If I know what the expectation for self is, and then consequently, what's the consequences, if I don't do those things, it's, might prevent me from doing that. And our, our building principals do do that. We also have pre-K, K, sixth and ninth grade orientation where that, just that grade level will be in each of the buildings. And I think that's on Friday, August 11th. That might be a great time to just stop by and see some of those assemblies and, and I don't know that pre-K is an assembly as much as it might be classroom talk about how we respect the hallways, what do we do when we're going in between, how we keep our hands to ourselves and things like that. Some of those things are also appropriate for upper grade level students. But that is, those are some things that are done.
And I wanted to point out that I think a very similar comment to yours was made by Mrs. Lowry at the meeting yesterday. Am I right? You, you were making the point of that, that as the students begin their year, they need to get this message of, here's the behaviors we expect. She was making that point, just like you were.
Great, because the stronger it is, the better, I believe.
Mrs. Lowry, go ahead.
Yeah, and my point was, was that I know how it works. Like, I support what, I'm supporting what the superintendent, Dr. Edwards was just saying, because in my classroom, we set it, the rules even on the last day of school, we always set them. So, the kids were very clear when they broke it, what they broke, and they already knew why they broke it, and they knew they were going to have to write about it. But I didn't know how it worked that well, I didn't know how it worked at the middle and high school level. That's why I brought it up the way I did. If they were more, if the, if they're, it's reiterated, you break these, you break these, you know, this could happen, this is a consequence, this is con, so let's, like, try to work together and get along, et cetera, et cetera. So, these things are already done. Mr. Jaleel, it's just that I didn't know how it worked at the middle and high school level. That's why I brought it up.
Very good. I downloaded one of those, and it was just a bunch of platitudes, which is okay. It's good to get into people. But I would like to see the one or three consequences very clearly shared with all the students that we agree with.
Okay.
Ahead of time.
Yes, sir. And we also try to layer this as well. So, as a school assembly, that's one layer. Also, at the classroom level, teachers are going over their expectations of what student behavior should be in the classroom. But they're also working really hard to build relationships with the students. So, those relationships can be utilized to help achieve student success.
That's key, yes. I agree.
Yes, sir.
Do you know how many assemblies there will be during the year?
It varies on schools. Some schools do one at the beginning, and then one, as they come back from winter break. Some schools do each quarter. It just varies, but we're working, remember your request, and we're working on getting that list together for you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I, I, can I say, I accidentally, you know, there's a button underneath my desk, and I do like this, I push the button, and the, the police was called in, there's an emergency. So, there's nothing, I just, this is my bad habit and my leg touch. A panic button underneath the desk.
Nobody ever explained to us that's...
I press it all the time.
No, I just, I just, I just do like this all the time. So, I must have accidentally pushed it.
I didn't know they were live.
Yeah. Ms. Lowry, do you got any, any other questions? Mrs. Lowry? Mr. Andrews?
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Day. Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Yes, sir. I'll be back for the policy part.
Dunbar has, like, no excuses, please. You know, they, they follow that, no excuses. I've seen it many times, like, next one, J1, Facilities Master Plan, Dr. Edwards?
Yep, I'm, turn it over to Dr. Wood.
Good evening, everyone. So, as you know, at our last meeting, we had our four potential scenarios for Facilities Master Plan. We published them, and immediately after, we published all that information online. We have been engaged since then in a very in-depth community engagement process. We have had a couple of different ways. So, we've had our public community survey. We've had about 1,400 responses to that, as well as our four public, four public meetings that we've heard, that we've, excuse me, that we held, at Paul Monroe Sandusky Heritage in Darrington. And we estimate, we probably had around 200 people total in those meetings and had great conversations around each one of those scenarios. So, we're working now also to outline some of the financial plans and, and analysis for some of those projects as they might come forward. And then, we will meet with city council next week as a group to review those and kind of get feedback and set a direction on where we're going. And this will be ultimately your decisions as we go forward. So, certainly happy to take any questions, but the process is moving forward.
I don't know what happened to our chair.
He just snuck out. He's back.
We're on to the next agenda item now.
Oh, it's done?
Yes.
That's quick.
You missed it.
You can repeat it.
Finish business, there's none.
May I, may I ask a question?
Go ahead, Ms. ...
On the, on the list of things is a report from the Academic Success Committee, and that's a new committee that was, was appointed. But I'm not aware that any kind of definition, instructions, expectations, whatever you want to call it, have been set for that, for that committee. So, when or, you're going to discuss that in a few moments? Okay, right.
The governance work group committee meeting is tomorrow. Next one is new business, CAC Committee Membership, Dr. Edwards.
So, this is the Special Education Advisory Committee, which Ms. Janine Daniels-Boscher talked to you about before, and this is one of the four advisory committees, but this is the one that gets started very quickly. So, what you have is a list of participants to be approved by the board. And if you recall, Ms. Daniels-Boscher shared that this is dictated by state code who participates on the committee. So, this is up here for your review and obviously your approval, so that this committee could get started with their work. And I believe she's, yes, you are. Did I leave anything out?
No, it actually, the only change is, it's actually up for information tonight and would be for consent in September, unless they choose to want to do that today.
Would you like to make it an action item or just continue? We'll do it in September, Ms. Next one is the School Board Advisory Committee's invitation to participate.
Yes, this is just for public information, as I mentioned before, but just to put it on the agenda, that we are soliciting interest in our four advisory committees to the school board. And if you click on the link, that is the policy. The information is on our website. So, families or participants who are interested, including existing members, can fill out that form or email me. And then, that is going to close, I believe, on August, excuse me, August 25th, after we get started with school. We want to make sure that all of our parents are back and have the opportunity to sign up if they want to. And then, I will be bringing a list of the School Health Advisory Board, the CTE Advisory, and the Equity Task Force to the school board.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Discipline Policy Recommendations.
Yes, okay. So, I did, and to the public, I put a little disclaimer. We usually are not editing our agenda up until the day of, but the Discipline Policy Review Committee met yesterday. So, yesterday about six o'clock, when we were all on our way home, we did a lot of work between six and noon to get some of the information up and running. So, the committee recommended some changes to existing policies. One of those policies is the BCA, which you see there, is the School Board Discipline Committee, which is the policy specifically for that. We modified the practice to add the hearing officer and also to change the appeal process so that the appeal would come to that three-member committee, the committee that will be a standing committee, which you'll see on the next policy, that will meet monthly to evaluate that. So, what you see are our best 24-hour recommendations for how to modify that policy to include language that represented the discussion that the Discipline Policy Committee had yesterday regarding the hearing officer. So, that is BCEA, the School Board Discipline Committee policy. And I can either go through them all and take questions, or stop and take questions.
Let's go through it.
Let's go through, okay. The next policy is BCEZ. So, there's a little bit of overlap here in that this is your committees. You have the Finance and Facilities Committee, the Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations Committee, the Student Discipline Committee, and then also, there is a proposal for an Academic Success Committee. So, what we did here was update Finance and Facilities and Legislative Advocacy to add language that says, in addition to the three school board members, that this committee may also have a parent liaison, so that it's codified and it's official that there are parents on that committee. The third committee, Student Discipline, we changed it to mirror what is the ad hoc, I'm sorry, what is the hearing officer procedure or hearing officer setup that was in the previous one. This one does not have a parent on the Discipline Committee for reasons of, if you're hearing an appeal, now you have the student's personal information, and we weren't sure about all of that with FERBA. So, we did not add a parent liaison to that specific committee, but we did add it to the, the other two. The reason why we're bringing it here the way it is right now is so we can get the language in for school discipline and also the language for the two parents. We're going to bring it back after we meet to get language for the Academic Success Committee, because that will have to be added to this one once we discuss what we think the charge is. And we're going to meet tomorrow morning to do that. But it was timely, we met yesterday, we wanted to bring this to the board and make sure that we could move forward with Student Discipline, Finance and Facilities, and the Legislative Advocacy as written. Okay. Let me skip JGD, JGE for a moment, because that's big. Let me go to JFCY and just, or JFCY and just talk really quickly. And I think this might speak to what Mr. Jaleel, one of the things that you were talking about. So, this is one of the policies that came from the principals and their input. And one of the things that they are asking the board to remove from the stress policy are flip-flops and likes, like slides. So, the Nike slides that you, you stick your foot in, anything that doesn't have a strap around the back of the ankle is prohibited in schools right now. And they're asking that we remove that and allow students to wear that. They do spend a lot of time asking students to change your footwear, or you got to go call home and get some different footwear. This is one of those things that's in the policy, that if we're going to enforce it, it's a lot of conversation back and forth regarding that. So, it is in here at the request of the principals so that they can start the year with having clear expectations for students and not start the year saying, no flip-flops, and then change their mind if there are flip-flops. So, they ask that that be in there for your consideration. And then, the big one, which Dr. Brown is still here, thank goodness, because you'll see that this one, JGE, JGD, JGE, which is the student suspension, if you scroll all the way down to where it starts to talk about expulsion, where is it? It's long-term suspension, which is section four, and then expulsion, you'll see red areas are crossed out. All of the green is the conversation that we had with the Discipline Review Committee yesterday. So, this was the proposal. You see the letter of agreement, which a student can enter into. And if you continue to scroll under section five, you'll see some changes in the expulsion as well. So, in this policy is the added verbiage that mirrors what we talked about with the hearing officer procedure, the letter of agreement, and the appeal process for that. And again, they will appeal to the committee, but if the committee is not unanimous in their decision, the three board member, it will come to the full board. And I think that was all of that, and we tried to get that all together at the request of the Discipline Committee to have it for the full board for possible approval before the kids come back.
Mr. Jaleel, go ahead. Got a question?
I'm for very clear and strong language on this issue, on these issues of discipline. Is there a way to add a mandatory or an alternate choice of consequence for something that amounts to long-term suspension or expulsion that includes community service so that the students who don't mind getting expelled, expelled, have something that...
That they do mind?
Yes. That is needed, because you talk to many, many students, and they, they have different attitudes about this type of thing. You know, short-term, long-term suspensions, expulsion, you know, go ahead, expel me. But, I mean, I've heard things like that. But if you have a community service that is clearly annoying to a student, it may influence their behavior positively, whether they, they know what it's going to be like before they go into it or not, because it may turn them around. Certain types of community services are really impactful on people, and you have a tremendous amount to choose from.
And, and community service doesn't have to be punishment in the sense of derailing the kid. It can also be a learning experience as well, which can have a positive impact on kids. I used to be Mr. Brown in my past life, and, and I recall having a student that got suspended, and because he was in alternative ed, and his mother was concerned about him being at home for part of the day in an unsupervised environment, I convinced my husband and one of his friends that they needed to work with this kid.
I convinced my husband and one of his friends that they needed to work with this kid for part of the day. And the mother was in a, in agreement with that. He had torn down some railings on somebody's house. So these two gentlemen went out there every day in his time that he wasn't in alt-ed and helped him fix the railings while these two old men were telling him, "Son, this ain't what you want to do with your life." And, and/or were teaching him a skill that might be of some benefit to him if in fact, so I, I don't, I, I think the idea of community service is good, but I also think we don't need to think of it necessarily as being all punitive or necessarily punitive because it can be a positive experience that's going to help kids too. It's just being selective about what that community service is and with whom that community service is, if that makes any sense at all.
Oh, absolutely. I always thought that all students should have some sort of community service. I think that it would be, um, great to be able to categorize them as these are really enjoyable community service opportunities and these are really annoying or irritating community service opportunities and, uh,
And you can contribute to your community by doing these things. And for a lot of the kids that end up in, in alternative ed, they have benefited from some of the community service, uh, opportunities that there are in our city. I mean, they could go to work for Daily Bread or at Jubilee or Parkview or somewhere. Some of these kids have gotten, uh, have, have availed themselves of, of what those places offer. And so it's, it's a give and take and so it's a learning experience as, as well. And I think that's critical.
Dr. Brown or Dr. Edwards?
No, I was looking at Dr. Brown because as you said, that community service can be one of the ways that we restore. Um, when you look at restorative academies and you look at the, the need to, like you did harm, now how do you remediate, repair and restore? It could be through community service and some of the things that you already have going on. So go ahead and talk about that.
And, um, we, we have worked really diligently over the last year with our staff and our team to craft different model for alternative education. And the, the term suspension and expulsion is a little deceiving because even when we're saying long-term suspension, we're not saying that students are just roaming the streets for 364 days or 45 days. They're going to our alternative suspension sites and locations and working within those programs. And those programs are being redeveloped and redesigned to be very intentional to change student behavior so that they can be successful in returning to the base school and being productive members of our community and society. And so we have a lot of community partners that we're working with, um, not just to come in and, and work with kids just as fill time, but to actually build relationships with them, help them change their behavior, help them understand the harm that they've done to their school, to themselves, to their family, to their parents, um, and, and change that behavior. So we have a lot of different things that are in place and a lot of plans that are rolling out here in the next year. Um, and, you know, of course, uh, community service is a huge component to that. And we want to make sure that students understand that it is important to give back to their community in a positive way. And that's, that's that restorative mindset and that's why we call LCS Restore because it's not just about, "I did this wrong and now I have to serve this consequence. I did this wrong, now how can I repair the relationship and repair the harm that I've done?" And make sure that they have that mindset at any time to do anything wrong in the community or in their personal lives or at home, they're trying to fix that and restore that.
That is fantastic. I also like the way Ms. Preston put it, which is it's not a punishment or it doesn't have to be given out as a punishment. I remember working with the, the Scouts and with, uh, Trail Life USA and they have patches and badges that they give for community service. So if students can see that they can earn something along with giving, I think that would be a tremendous benefit to the wholesome education of the students.
And they're getting positive attention rather than negative attention and I think that's critical.
So it should be offered to all the students to some degree and then those programs to those who need remediation of some sort.
Agreed, yes, sir.
Mrs. Lowry, do you have any questions? Mrs. Lowry?
No, I just wanted to say that I'm so glad to hear that there are so many practices, uh, in place already here in Lynchburg City Schools. It's, I'm glad I'm here. This is a positive and such a wonderful city school system.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews?
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
I have nothing to add. I'm really enjoying listening to what you guys are saying. I, I agree with, I agree with Jalil and, uh, Ms. Preston about just giving kids an opportunity to decent community service, especially if it's going to be a, a positive outlook on that. So yeah, I'm all for it.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments, suggestions? Uh, Ms., Ms., Dr. Brown, you mentioned that the flip-flop will reduce the number of referrals. Would you like to tell the board?
Yes, sir. Um, you know, once our principals give multiple warnings and students, it, it becomes an issue of defiance or not following the request of the school administration and that could lead to a referral. And so, um, because our principals do follow our policy, uh, we do believe that if we don't follow our policy, there's no point in having one. So, um, that's something that's been in there very specifically. And if it is taken out, it would help our administrators and I believe improve our school climate as well. Give students a little bit more flexibility, um, in what they're choosing to wear to school.
So it seems to me that that
Go ahead, Mrs. Lowry. Go ahead.
No, it's, I, and the reason we don't allow them to wear flip-flops is because of things that can fall on their toes. Is there any, uh, responsibility on the students if they choose to wear this footwear? That if something happens to their feet, it's their responsibility?
We, we will make sure that we remind students in an appropriate way. Like in gym class, they do have to make sure they're wearing appropriate, uh, footwear there. If they are in one of our CTE classrooms or one of our labs, um, there are certain times if they're on field trip or outside on the track that they have to wear that appropriate footwear. Um, but we do believe, uh, and other local school systems do allow this as well and students are able to, to manage, um, without a lot of pushback and fallback. Thank you for the question.
Yeah, we also have the concern, uh, Mrs. Lowry, we also have the concern when you talk about toes and you start looking at sandals in general and sandals that students wear where their toes are out as well as sandals that adult, I happen to have on sandals right now that adults wear where their toes are out. So the concern is a little, little broader, um, when you look at the lens of just footwear in general.
My concern and my actual support for removing the sandal slider precept is the health angle. It is actually quite healthier for a person to walk barefoot. I'm not saying to ball Griffin school, but it i- i- it's, it's, the science is growing and it's well-known actually right now that they're not, they have not made shoes in the same shape as your foot. And so what it does is it punches in, it pushes in your big toe in this way and this alters your ankle and that alters your, your knee and your hip position. And then you're out of position in your alignment for as long as you're wearing the shoes or as long as you have that misalignment in your foot. So this can cause a certain type of low-grade stress. It causes all sorts of things that I could go into, but it is much healthier in many respects if a person has the choice between, um, footwear. As long as it's not a detriment to a gym, I would suppose I would be supportive of that.
Dr. Brown, uh, you know, the schools are opening up pretty soon.
Yes, sir.
This is a frustrating of these policies. I'm assuming, um, you like these policies to be approved before the schools open or you can wait till September?
It would be helpful if we could start the school year with the, these policy changes because that would help us be consistent throughout the year. If we wait until September, we may have some referrals and some incidents that happen and then we'll have to change course, uh, mid-year.
Plus, there's that aspect that, let's say they get the referral, they get a couple, uh, down the pipe and then all of a sudden it changes, as it was mentioned before, um, and they might, the student might be emboldened by saying or thinking, "Ha, I got over on them. They changed the policy because I'm fighting back."
I'm assuming you're putting a motion to make it an action item tonight?
I would like that, to do that.
Mr. DePaul, uh, Mr. Tross seconded the motion.
Your motion refers to all four policies here?
Yes.
Yes.
Just to clarify that.
Yes.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote?
I just wanted to, to be sure, um, that the footwear policy I think is pretty straightforward. That's not so complicated. The other three policies, we approve them. We are adopting this, um, Hearing Officer-based model for how we're going to handle the suspensions. And that's a significant change. If we weren't up against the timeline of school starting pretty quickly, we would probably want to take time to, to digest this and think about it. But, um, in the interest of having a policy in place by the first day of school that is going to stay in place for at least the school year, um, then I think we should put all of these to, uh, a vote for an immediate adoption or not. But that does mean we are about to vote on the, um, Hearing Officer-based approach.
Mrs. Lowry, Mr. Andrews, any comments?
No, I agree.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Same here, I don't know.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Jalil?
Yes.
Mr. Tross?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. This is a significant change in our handling of discipline. I think this will have an impactful, impact on the behavior, what we have been seeing. So thank you, Dr. Brown. Working very hard, very diligently because this board was reorganized on July 11th. Today's what, August 1st? We made a big impact. So thank you to all, thank you to Dr. Edwards for making a major impact of the discipline policies.
Thank you all for opting.
Thank you. And Dr. Edwards?
We're on the next agenda, I know.
Yeah.
Okey-dokey.
Superintendent comments?
Yay!
We're only at 6:37. It doesn't look like.
Take this, 15 minutes or less. Uh, but just want to welcome back our Bass staff, um, those, and thank all of you that showed up to kind of clap our little babies in, um, and they are in and, and ready to, ready to roll there at Bass. And kudos to Monica Hendricks, who's the principal there. Um, excellent leadership, excellent staff and just wonderful children. Just made my day when we were there, um, the day that we were having agenda prep. Um, not going to talk too much about MGT Open House. We're going to hear so much more about that next week when we have our joint meeting. I want to thank my colleagues, particularly, um, Superintendent in Bedford for hosting, um, the AI workshop for all of us superintendents and our tech folks. And our, um, Deputy Superintendent also attended that. There was, there was so much to still learn and grow in that area. You guys have seen some of that with me using the tool to make the questions that we sent to the students, uh, student reps. Um, but there's more to come in that and how we use that as a productive tool in public education um, rather than, um, you know, a fearful tool. I want to say a big thank you to my entire administrative staff that attended summer leadership. Um, we had an excellent summer leadership, um, that really hit home on our theme of accelerating excellence and innovation. And you can see that we are definitely accelerating with this board here. We got a lot of work done in a short period of time and we will continue to move forward, um, with that. And just kudos to, um, Dr. Wodoka for, um, some of the grant writing skills and getting a, the new playground at Bass. And we had an opportunity to go over and sit with students as they gave input to the type of playground they wanted. So I can't wait to get on the zip line and the trampoline and the shady areas with the little workplace area.
McDonald's.
And the McDonald's, that's right, that's right. Um, the children were so excited to do that. So good things are happening here. Um, we have a busy week next week. Uh, shout out to all of the new staff here at Lynchburg City Schools. New teachers started yesterday. They've been in, in the buildings, um, and doing some amazing things already. The rest of the staff come back next week. So it is going to be, um, on and popping here in Lynchburg City Schools. Lots of good learning and please do sign up for Tech Extravaganza, come out, you will enjoy it.
What is the time for that?
Wonderful, it's all day, Wednesday, the Thursday, from about eight to, eight to three, I think.
Three, three thirty.
Can we come and go though? Because I know I've got something else that day, okay.
And that's my report.
Oh, wait, I was supposed to mention one other thing just for the general public, um, that you recall that the governor has released the model policies. Um, and we were waiting on the, the model policy. So I just want the public to know that, yep, we are aware. Um, we are in consultation with our attorneys about, um, some of the changes that were made or some of the suggestions that were made. We also have, um, our existing Equity Task Force that had, we had a subgroup, subgroup of Equity Task Force that is working on that and giving a community perspective and they want to give some advice to the board. They will probably have that ready, I guess, September or October-ish because they're working on it now.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Before I go to board comments, I missed one item was the, is the VSBA governance meeting. Uh, we need to figure out a date, uh, for that. Dr. Edwards had suggested September 13th and, um, except for one board member, uh, I think I talked to all of you, looks like that will work, right? And, uh, could we do one board member through Zoom?
I can talk to Gina.
That would be me.
Yeah, with, with Dr. Day. That way we, we don't have to go hunt for another meeting day. Mrs. Lowry, Mr. Andrews, we good? September 13th. So September 13th, uh, Mr. Tross, thank you for agreeing, at 11th hour. And Ms., Dr. Carter.
Do you have to travel there or is it going to be here?
It'll be in Charlotte.
Okay.
Who's going to provide, who's going to provide the shuttle bus?
You are. You're welcome to ride with me, Jalil.
I said that mine in Hinsenham too, but I'm going to confirm that with Gina.
It, it, it would be feasible to carpool because we're all going at the same time and all coming back at the same time. So, um, I'm open to carrying several people in my car with me if anyone should like to.
You can be Zoom.
Huh?
Aren't you going to be by Zoom?
Oh, that's right, I can't do that by Zoom.
We're taking your car.
Sorry, I'm
We appreciate that.
End of a long day and next time. Sorry.
Thank you. September 13th will be the governance, uh, meeting in Charlotte. Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Uh, board comments, uh, we'll start with Mr. DePaul.
Thank you. I hope you have a great night.
Mrs. Preston?
Um, when you get the date and time and so forth confirmed for us and we send it out to everybody, is that a good time to maybe to communicate as far as the possibility of carpooling? Then that way, you know, we don't have to all find each other, we can just respond that way.
Dr. Day?
No.
Mr. Tross?
Oh, oh, you asked me for my comment. I thought no, I'm dead. A long day.
Mr. Tross?
Another shout out to Tech Extravaganza, it's fantastic. There was one particular session I really enjoyed. I don't recall the name of it, it's where the, the, our teachers would come up to the auditorium stage and present in a minute or so something technological that would really help them in their classroom. It wasn't necessarily technological, but that was basically the emphasis of it. And not only were the tidbits they taught really key and, and educational, but the enthusiasm of our instructors really shines through with that. And that, I took away from that, that session more than anything was, wow, these guys, these guys and ladies really care about doing the best for, uh, the school system. So shout out to it. It's really a lot of fun if you have a chance to even break away for an hour or two to make it to that meeting. I encourage it, so hopefully I can make it.
Eight to three?
I believe, I'm not sure the exact time.
I believe it's eight to three and the session you're speaking of was the slam.
That's it.
And it's, I think that's usually right after lunch. And it just, it does, it energizes people and, um, it's good to see everyone excited about getting up and presenting. And it's, I think you have to present in less than a minute.
It's quick.
Um, it's just a quick presentation of something that you're doing in your classroom. Um, so it's really good.
Is there a schedule of the activities somewhere if we go to the website or whatever?
Yes, I believe there is.
Okay, because then that way we can determine when.
And even other, I mean, I, there's some things that I could use in my, um, daily life from that, taking this little slam session, it was really great, a lot of fun.
Mr. Jalil?
Before I forget, I'm going to give a few copies of Color Me Safe to Ms. Pugh. And if she'd like to give it to someone, um, on the board or in the staff. It has to do with teaching kids, uh, the good and bad types of touches. Their little, um, color, color me in pictures here, good and bad types from, you know, parents and, um, other people. So it's, uh, something that you may want to introduce, I don't know, in the, in the school. Also, uh, I am very thankful for all the different work that has been done to make things progress so quickly. It's very nice to see and, and hear and, um, it just looks like we're on the right It's very nice to see and and hear and it just looks like we're on the right track to make some things happen for the benefit of all involved in the school system, so I like that a lot. I did notice that I would like to thank somebody who put together our name tags. That would be. Thank you, Tina. Question is, when we get more experience and maybe when we're on the board longer, do we get a larger font on our name tags?
All depends.
How we behave.
Exactly.
I see your font.
Mrs. Lowry?
I just have a question, a question for Dr. Edwards about convocation. Are we all supposed to attend or just Dr. Gupta?
Everybody, everybody attends. We invite city councils, Delegate Walker will be there. You don't want to miss that fun.
I'm going to contact you, Mrs. Lowry, about that. I have something for you, so I'll be contacting you. Will you be back in town by seven?
Yes, I'll get back midnight, August sixth. I will protect Extravaganza, but as a teacher, I've been to plenty of them and they are very good. And my husband's a techie, so I use technology, so, but yes, I I will be there. I'll be back in town the seventh.
I'm not going to yield my time for my comment, but I can say my plan was, and I told, I talked to Dr. Edwards, I have five minutes to speak. I was going to take a minute and yield rest to the local delegation, but only Delegate Walker took my offer for one minute. So I was going to give it to the new school board members to speak to the, for a minute each because we never introduced the new school board members to the district. So that's what I was going to reach out to you and three. Take a minute, not hour long speech, just one minute because she's giving total of five minutes for the new three school board members.
Not even fifteen minutes.
Mr. Andrews, go ahead, sir.
I don't have any comments, I just appreciate y'all let me get on Zoom on tonight's board meeting, I appreciate you.
And take care of our heroes.
All works out from the, on the health front, thank you. My comment is, you know, let's start this year with some positivity, you know, what we expect from our students. We should be the role models for them. So we expect a positive reinforcement. Then when we go to the joint city council meeting, I don't want to hear that your enrollments are down and you're a bunch of lousy people not doing your job. Let's set up a standard for our students. Let's set up a positive environment for them to grow. Let's take the negativity out. And that should be the theme, at least personally for me, to take out that negativity because I need to be role model for my kids. If I smoke and I drink and I do all kinds of lousy behavior, what standard am I setting for my own kids? And same thing, these are all our kids. And so we should be setting up a standard for them, for behavior. And the behavior is be positive. And Dr. Edwards, you are the best in setting up that, so I'll give the baton to you now. Last, last comment is yours.
You said it perfectly and I think I say all the world is a classroom, so kids are always learning from us. Especially how we handle conflict and disagreement is a wonderful opportunity for us to model. We don't have to have the same ideas and thoughts, but we can certainly treat each other with respect and courtesy as we share those. That's how we're going into our meeting next week.
That is the key. And that, you know, there's a lot of people who work behind the scenes, Dr. Wodoka, Ms. Kapasi, Ms. Pugh, Ms. Day. They're on phone, I call Ms. Day several times a day. She, with a smile, she picks up the phone no matter how irritating my question. And that sets the tone for rest of us to follow. So, and then there are informational items. August seventh, we have a convocation, eight forty-five. So I already yielded my one minute introduction followed by Delegate Walker and then three minutes to our new school board members, a minute each. Dr. Edwards, that's for record now. August eighth, we have a joint city council meeting. It'll be in the Business Alliance building?
That should be confirmed now that they're moving it to there.
So the Business Alliance building and some of these parent liaisons ask me if they can or they should be there. I think they, they try to or attempt to be there, so they are involved in the discussion at least as the audience. And August tenth is a new school board member, school board member orientation and operations with Dr. Wodoka at one PM. Saturday, August twelfth is One Community, One Voice Back to School Block Party at University of Lynchburg. The next school board work session is Tuesday, August fifteenth, five PM and right here. And Thursday, August twenty-fourth is New School Board Member Orientation Community at one PM. Any other additions, Dr. Edwards?
No, that's it.
What time it is? Six fifty-one.
Six fifty-one.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. DePaul?
Second.
Mr. Jaleel? We are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.